Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Fort Wayne Community School Board of Trustees. Just a reminder that this meeting sits since under the ongoing public health emergency. We are, even though we are meeting in person and we do have members of the public here, we are restricted by capacity. So some members of the public who may wanted to attend may be excluded. But you are encouraged to view this meeting on Comcast Cable 54 or Frontier 24. It's live stream on our Facebook page and it's on the LTV 2454 Fort Wayne Community School YouTube channel. So we begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call of members?
Good evening. Steve Corona from the 5th District.
Glenna Yale, 2nd District.
Tom Smith, 3rd District.
Maria Norman, Member at Large.
Anne, the Last Member at Large.
Anne is joining us on the phone.
Raleigh Booker, 4th District.
And I'm Julie Hollingsworth, elected from District 1. We have no awards and recognition for tonight's meeting, so that brings us to the consent agenda. These are items that come to us every week. They include the minutes from our previous meeting on November 23rd, vouchers and payroll, vouchers for the period ending December 14th, and payroll for the period ending November 20th, and the personnel report. And members have seen all of these items before the meeting. Do we have a motion and a second?
A move approval of the items listed under the consent agenda.
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Maria. So all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Okay. I'll get you last. Okay, was there, Dr. Daniel, was there anything on the personnel report you wanted to highlight?
Yes, there is. First of all, we have an interim principal at Northrop High School. Her name is Liz Bryan. She has been with Fort Wayne Community Schools since 2002, when she was hired as a business teacher at Northside High School. She then went through the Director's Administrative Internship Program and became an assistant principal at Northside. In 2007, she became the Director of the District's Smaller Learning Communities Project, which established initiatives designed to give students a strong start to their high school careers and prepare them for life after high school. Liz was the first director of New Tech Academy at Wayne, opening the program in 2009. She led the program until 2016, when she became manager of K-12 Personalized Education at the newly opened Family and Community Engagement Center. Liz received her bachelor's degree from Ball State and her master's degree from Indiana University. Very pleased to say she will be our interim principal at Northrop High School. I also would like to just say that, knock on wood, I don't know if I really should say this, but we have not witnessed any surges yet from the Thanksgiving holiday. So it's partially because we have 100% remote by our high schools. I think that's been part of what we're seeing. And again, our coverage, because of the movement of subs and instructional assistants, has been very, should we say, they've handled the requirement of those subs in our middle schools and our elementarys. So knock on wood on that. So just to let you know, still asking everyone to, throughout the holiday season, remain careful with your gatherings and safe wearing of masks and so on and so forth. So, and we'll continue having our hotline open. Our nurses will still be working during the holidays, so if something does happen with our students or our staff, they'll have access to our nursing staff. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Both those things are good news and congratulations to Liz Bryan. Okay, we have no old business. Next, we, and our new business, first is the appointment of the Fort Wayne Community School Building Corporation Board of Directors member. It's recommended that the board appoint Kathleen Smith to the Fort Wayne Community Schools Building Corporation Board of Directors. State law establishes the need for building corporations. They exist solely for the purpose of financing projects. Due to the resignation of Stephen Sowers, there is a vacant director position. We appreciate Stephen's long service. Other members include Stephen Pekarsky, President, Benny Lewis, Secretary, Pamela Martin Diaz, and Sharon McCauley. And also Kathleen Smith was the treasurer of the repair of Fort Wayne Community School PAC in our successful 2020 referendum. So questions will be addressed by Chief Financial Officer Kathy Friend. Do we have a motion and a second? Move for approval?
Second.
Thanks, Glenna. Thanks, Tom. Any questions?
How long does the appointment? There, there really is no timeframe. Many of these people have been on the board for many years, so it usually just depends on if they want to go off of it. And their, their activity is very limited, so it's not like we're, we're bothering them very much, just whenever we do a financing, which is usually about once a year.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this appointment signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or ESER, grant, which is part of the CARES Act. It's recommended that the board approve the application for an acceptance of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or ESER, grant from the Indiana Department of Education in the amount of $10,294,493.19 for the 20 to 22 school years. ESER funds were established by the Federal CARES Act that was signed in March 2020 as a response to the coronavirus global pandemic. School districts are afforded the additional funds to respond to effects of the shutdown and unexpected changes in learning environments for the foreseeable future. Funds may be used for enhanced cleaning, technology for remote learning, internet connectivity, staffing, health services and supplies, professional learning, et cetera. A portion of the funding is equitably shared with non-public schools who enroll students residing in Title I attendance areas. Fort Wayne Community Schools is using about $4 million of the funding in coordination with a GEAR grant to provide the additional devices and internet connectivity needed to complete the district's one-to-one technology plan beginning, at the beginning of the 2021 school year. This grant is managed by Kimberly Brooks, Title I Manager, in coordination with Kathy Friend, and they are both available to answer any questions. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Thanks, Maria. Thanks, Raleigh. So Kathy, just one question, and I just want to, and I mention this because I read something about it the other day. I saw that our outgoing Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, was critical of schools, claiming they really didn't need any more money, I think, because they had to spend what they've gotten. But explain why that is, and, and part of it, of course, is that it can be used for staffing.
Yeah, in fact, we have not submitted all of our plans yet, so that's, that's probably where this confusion comes in.
Right, because it's a reimbursement.
Yes, yes.
Right, grant.
And we have either spent or committed all of the, or allocated all of the dollars that are in the grant. So that, I think that's probably why that, that question is being, or that's being stated. But we certainly would have been in big trouble had we not had all this money available to us, and we, we will be spending all of it, plus probably a little more.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And what, and what staffing do we use this money for?
What staffing?
Yeah, I mean, obviously staffing is not the only thing, but.
Yeah.
It's an ongoing.
Well, we added nurses, eight nurses that are paid for out of this money. We, we did hire some additional health aides, but they're not paid out of the ESER money. And we did hire some additional help desk staff also in technology to help our students and teachers, you know, be able to have contact with them. So that's about, we did pay for some security pay during summer lunch periods, but that was just for that, that period of time. So we, I gave you a list in weekly that you could look through. I mean, there, there's, there's quite a bit of different things that we use the money for. Every bit of it was really important, and I'm just very thankful that we got it.
And we can spend the money through how long?
Through December of '22 is when we have to actually spend the money by.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I have a question, and I, I don't think you answered this, I can't hear real well. But the all, the ESER money has either been spent or allocated. Is that the same with the GEAR grants? Has that been spent and/or allocated?
Right. Not, not all of that has been spent either, because some of that is to pay for connectivity for students, and so that also, we have time to spend that, you know, as those bills become due. So again, it's all committed, but we haven't spent it yet.
Okay, it is allocated, but not all spent.
Right. The technology itself that we had to purchase, that part has been spent, but the connectivity, the service that we have to pay for has not been spent.
Okay.
Did you get that, Anne?
I think so.
So I do have a question, because it says that the grant was for $10 million, and then it goes on to say that we've spent about $4 million, and it lists what we've, so is the other five or six million, is that for the, I know that there was a portion of it that said it was going to be for non-public schools?
Right. Of the total amount, the, out of the $10 million, about 8.7 million of that is available to us.
Okay.
Because the balance of that went to non-pubs.
Okay.
And of the 8.7, about $4 million is going towards the technology.
Got it. Okay. But we've allocated where the rest of that?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Kathy. Okay, all those in favor of approving this grant signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Grant approved. Next, we have the McKinney-Vento grant. It's recommended that the board approve the proposal for the acceptance for a second year of a three-year McKinney-Vento grant award in the amount of $193,000 a year on behalf of the Allen County McKinney-Vento Consortium. The Allen County McKinney-Vento Consortium consists of formalized partnerships with the following agencies: Fort Wayne Community Schools, East Allen County Schools, Northwest Allen County Schools, MSD Southwest Allen County Schools. Fort Wayne Community Schools acts as the lead agency for this consortium. 620 students have been identified for the 2021 school year. The funds are used to establish educational programs that provide tutoring, supplemental instruction, summer programs, partial salaries, and access to early childhood education programs not otherwise prevented, provided through federal, state, or local funding. Questions will be addressed by Christian Perez-Mora, Families in Transition Coordinator, and/or Tim Captain, Director of Student Services. Do we have a motion and a second? Motion for approval?
Second.
Thanks, Glenna. Thanks, Maria. Questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. It says that we have 620 students that were identified. Is that just within Fort Wayne Community Schools, or is it within the four agencies?
We are actually at 679 as of today, and that is just Fort Wayne Community that we've identified from August until today.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
And it doesn't say anywhere in this information, but this is to service students who are suffering from homelessness?
These are, these are funds particularly for McKinney-Vento students, so any student that is suffering from homelessness, living in a shelter hotel, or we do have a number of students who are families who are actually unsheltered, living in their cars, things like that. So this funding goes to help support those families specifically, so they can have access to education like all the other students would be, and it helps us provide them with more resources.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Christian. Okay, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Grant approved. Next, we have Title I Part A Basic and Neglected Grant. It's recommended that the board approve the application for an acceptance of the Title I Part A Basic and Neglected Grant for the 2021 school year from the Indiana Department of Education in the amount of $12,993,553.12. Title I funds provide supplemental services to students at 26 public schools, 34 non-public schools, 17 pre-K programs, one institution for neglected children, and for students experiencing homelessness. The services include, but are not limited to, additional staffing, which would include interventionists, instructional coaches, elementary therapeutic counselors, et cetera, professional learning, technology, and instructional material supplies to support students in home and at school. The grant is managed by Kimberly Brooks, Title I Manager, who will answer questions. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Maria. Questions? Yes, all those.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead, Raleigh.
So who are the, who are the students that this grant serves?
Several. The students that are in our, the 26 of our schools are all benefiting from the services. So I can provide you with a list of our 26 schools.
I mean, so what type of students? It says neglected, neglected children. So are those kids who are any, like, you know, DCS or?
Those are children who have been placed at Crossroad Children's Home. So those are in addition to the students that are in our 26 schools. We also provide for children who are at Crossroad.
Okay. But Title I is also funding for students from low-income households, correct? Or is that right?
That's how our schools are identified, based on the poverty rates. So, but any, once a school is identified, any child within that school that demonstrates academic need can benefit from services.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Kimberly. Okay, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, next we have the Title I Part D Delinquent Grant. It's recommended that the board approve the application for and acceptance of the Title I Part D Delinquent Grant for the 2021 school year in the amount of $72,155.81 from the Indiana Department of Education. The Allen County Juvenile Center, Lifeline Youth and Family, and Redwoods Delinquent Institutions receive funds through the Title I Part D Delinquent Grant to support instruction and transitional services for clients or students who reside in the above-mentioned facilities. Instruction is designed to sustain academic growth during residency and to close the achievement gap. Both credit coursework and/or tutoring services are available. And this grant is managed, again, by Kimberly Brooks, Title I Manager. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval?
Second.
Thanks, Maria and Glenna. Questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Kimberly, of these facilities that are listed, are, are FWCS students identified, and then that's how we fund them, or is that how that works?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And currently, how many students are we servicing through these facilities?
Well, the number is definitely falling. Right now, there are about 30 or so, but it's been a lot higher in previous years. But due to the JDAI initiative a few years back, there have been fewer students who actually reside in the facilities, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kimberly. So all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Grant approved. Next, we have the Title I SIG Grant Implementation. It's recommended that the board approve the application for an acceptance of the Title I School Improvement Grant Implementation from the Indiana Department of Education in the amount of $711,978.42 for the 20 to 22 school years. IDOE has identified five schools, Abbott, Bloomingdale, Scott, Kikianga, and Portage, to receive additional funding to support school improvement efforts. These schools, through strategic planning, will implement evidence-based interventions designed to meet the needs of their individual students. Three focus areas of the plan will be ambitious instruction, collaborative teaching, and effective leadership. This grant is again managed by Kimberly Brooks. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Maria. Thanks, Tom. Questions?
Kimberly, this grant reads that the schools are going to do strategic planning. Will that be just the school staffs themselves, or someone from IDOE coming up to do that planning with them?
Just the school staffs.
Just the school staff?
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Wake up! Opposed? Okay. Grant approved. Okay. Next, as we have talked about before, we have a board member resignation. It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Tom Smith, District 3, member of the Fort Wayne Community School Board of Trustees, effective January 1st, 2021. Tom Smith has represented voters in District 3 since 2017. Prior to the November 3rd, 2020 election, Mr. Smith announced that he would not fulfill a second term if elected. Mr. Smith won the election with 50.9% of district votes. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Maria. Thanks, Glenna. Questions, comments? I mean, I would just like to thank you, Tom, for, you know, being so honest and upfront about it, and I know you also helped Bill Crytell and had several conversations with him when he was running against you, and I just appreciate, you know, you making this a smooth project, a process, and allowing us to have somebody in place when the next term begins in January. So, you know, I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
You know, before Tom was elected to the board, he also came forward and was a very strong supporter of our referendum at the time, and I think his endorsement was powerful and as he had represented a portion of the city before. And I really do thank you for that support prior to your coming onto the board, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to miss being here. I've enjoyed it. I've had a lot of support from people, and I also know it's time for me to move on. And I want to thank everyone for their support, and I've enjoyed all of it. Thank you.
So all those in favor of accepting the resignation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nobody opposed, Tom. Resignation approved. Okay. So now, our last item of business is board action regarding the 3rd District Board Member. It's recommended that the board appoint a candidate to replace District 3 Board Member Tom Smith, who resigned from the board effective January 1st, 2021. This term expires December 31st, 2024. On November 11th, 2020, the board advertised it was taking applications from Fort Wayne Community School District 3 residents to fill Mr. Smith's vacated seat. When the application period ended on November 25th, there were five applicants who met the qualifications. Must reside in District 3 for at least one year, be registered to vote in District 3, and be at least 21 years old. On December 2nd, the board met in public session to interview the five candidates: Casey Claypool, William Crytell, Sherry Rouse, Julie Smith, and Noah Smith. At this time, the board will accept nominations from members for appointment to the District 3 seat. Each nominee will be voted upon by the board in the order of nomination. Four yes votes are required to appoint a nominee, and by law, Mr. Smith may not vote on his replacement. So at this time, any board member who wishes to place a name and nomination? Floor is open.
I would, I'd like to nominate a person.
Okay, Anne?
I would like, I'd like to nominate Noah Smith. I got to know Noah during the honors class ordeal. He was very outspoken during that time, and his, and was very, became an advocate, not just for keeping those honors classes, but for public education in general. And once that was complete, I know he was very excited to learn more about public education and becoming an advocate, and we suggested that he become involved at the state level. And he certainly did. He learned a lot. He taught himself a great deal. He asked a lot of questions to a lot of. He asked a lot of questions to a lot of people. I know he spoke with Kathy Friend a lot. So he really understands the fiscal part of public education. And that already is a strength of his and would be very helpful as being part of the Board. And like I said, he's truly become an advocate. He brought Jennifer McCormick to Fort Wayne, our current Superintendent of Public Instruction. And he's talked to, and she spoke at a group at Ivy Tech. He's talked to several state legislators about public education issues. I know he's written emails and postcards and made phone calls on behalf of public schools. And because of, Noah reminds me a little bit about Steve because Steve has so many connections in the community. And Noah does as well. And I think that's very helpful, being on the school Board. I know Steve has a lot of insight that we don't always have because of his connections. And Noah's also had other leadership roles in many organizations he's been involved with. And that includes the school, his children attend, his church, and the organizations around town. I know that Noah would represent Fort Wayne Community Schools very well. He's very proud of Fort Wayne Community Schools. And I know he would think it would be an honor to be a part of the Board. His children are in the district. He and his wife both graduated from Fort Wayne Community Schools. He also came very well-prepared for his interview. And he showed, you know, the passion he showed was truly sincere. And he showed a lot of the knowledge that he has acquired in the last two years during his interview. And I think a lot of his values and opinions align with those of us already on the Board. He's willing to speak up. He asks questions. He's willing to learn. So I think he would be great at school Board leadership. He's already formed a lot of relationships with all of us. And I think he would hit the ground running if appointed.
Okay, thanks, Ann. Anyone else?
I would like to nominate Sheri Rouse. I believe that she brings a completely different perspective to the Board that we currently lack, based on her involvement in community, based on her, on her knowledge of early learning and her special needs experience. One of our district's objectives is to ensure equity and access and opportunity to learn, and I'll add for all children. As a mother with special needs children, I have no doubt that she would be a strong advocate for our families with special needs students. And because of the work that she has done in the community, I believe that she has a good understanding of issues of equity and diversity and inclusion. Appointing her, I think, would be, send a really clear message to the district that we understand the district's diversity and the uniqueness of the makeup of our district and the importance for our family's interest to be represented on this Board. I think that she appears to be passionate, intelligent, capable. She also interviewed very well. I am confident that she would be just as competent and confident and knowledgeable in representing the district as anyone else given time.
Okay, thanks, Raleigh. Anyone else? Okay, so we have two nominees, Noah Smith and Sheri Rouse. And we will vote on Noah Smith first. And that will be a roll call vote, yes or no. And Steve, I'll begin with you.
Well, this was a tough decision. I think we had really great candidates. And this is a tough call. It's unfortunate that we only had one open position on the Board. But we had four candidates that were parents of the district and a longtime administrator and principal. But I'm going to vote for Noah Smith.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Glenna?
I agree with Steve. We had some very, very qualified candidates who interviewed well. I went into the interviews with a very open mind to be able to pick who I felt would bring the skill sets that would, again, add to the strength of this Board. And I, like Steve, felt that Noah Smith is a good candidate, that he's passionate. But I'm especially interested in his business background, his financial knowledge and budgeting. I just think in an economic downturn or that's going to be very helpful to have someone on the Board who can help us prioritize the limited funds that we will be getting, even though the Governor has said that he is committed to keeping our finances and being able to help with teacher salaries going forward, despite the pandemic. I think that Noah will contribute to this Board. And so that's the person I am voting for at this time.
So you vote for, that's a yes for Noah?
Noah Smith, yes.
Okay. Maria?
I will vote yes for Noah. I believe that in getting to Noah over the last couple of years, the reason that I will advocate for Noah is that he's been an advocate at the state level. And those of you following public education know that a lot of the strings, all of the strings are pulled in Indianapolis. And we're contacting legislators and trying to get them to understand everything that our very large urban school district is going through. And Noah has already done that on his own time, not even being a school Board Member. And so I like that aspect. And all of the other ones that have been mentioned, but that one in particular. So, yes.
Thanks, Maria.
Yep.
Ann?
I agree that we did have some great candidates. And I'm sure they will continue to be great leaders in our community. But my vote will go for Noah. So it's a yes for Noah.
Thank you. Well, that's really it. You and I really don't have to vote, Raleigh.
You don't?
But go ahead.
So my vote is no.
Okay. And I don't have to vote either. But I agree with Steve and each of you that we really did have an outstanding group of candidates. I appreciate Bill Crytell. I also think, I mean, I think any one of the five would have definitely brought something to the Board. Bill was, you know, brave enough to put himself out there and run for election. And that's not an easy thing to do. So I want to thank you for that. And, but my vote for Noah would also be yes. So, by five to one, Noah Smith will be, effective January 2021, the District III Board Member. So congratulations. And thank you, and really, thank you to all five of the candidates for putting in the effort, for showing the interest. And each of them, even as you said, Raleigh, I think would have definitely brought something to the table. But I believe our decision is clear. So, thank you, everyone. And that is the last item on our agenda, which brings us to Board Member Comments, starting with you, Steve.
Well, Noah, I'm going to tell you one thing. You're going to have a difficult time outdoing my partner to the left here. She's got beautiful nails. And one of them has a little snowflake on it. So I don't know if you can outdo that or not.
My daughter would have to do that.
Maybe we better seat him somewhere else.
This, earlier today, the report from the Governor's Commission on Teacher Pay was released. And they made 37 recommendations as to how to bring up teacher pay in Indiana, which has fallen dramatically compared to teacher pay in other states over the past 10 years. Several of the recommendations, I don't have the full list, but several of the recommendations there they put forward was to cut the health insurance of our teachers and school employees, to raise taxes on your home, and to cut spending in other areas of our budget. I just want to remind people, and this is why you have the old guy still sticking around, because I've got a memory of where we've been. And I pulled out, I told Kathy Friend that I brought my budget book from earlier this year. And Slide 16 identifies the loss of our tax from the tax cap over the past 12 years. And Kathy Friend, our Chief Financial Officer, indicated that since 2009, we've lost $78 million. $78 million. So think about what that would have done for teacher pay since better than 90% of our budget is on salaries and primarily teacher salaries. In addition to that, we are, we are losing, and this is not directly, but it still has an impact on our budget. This year, 4,642 families, or let me go back. During the 1819 school year, 4,642 students living in our district elected to take a voucher and get an education somewhere else. We are the number-one school district most adversely affected by those payments, in part because we have great options. And there's no doubt about it. We have four great parochial schools in Duenger, Lures, Concordia, and Blackhawk. And we have charter schools, too. But we have lost, or during that year, we lost $20 million in funding that could have come our way had those students attended Fort Wayne Community Schools. Now, I'm not saying all of them would have, but I'm saying a certain portion should have been in our district. So, you know, my suggestion, in addition to those 37 recommendations, is that the General Assembly looks at seriously cutting the amount of money they will budget for vouchers. If they're serious about raising teacher pay in public schools, in public schools, that this is the fund that they need to take a look at. And I'll go one step farther. I will suggest that because we are so adversely affected in Allen County, in Fort Wayne Community Schools, that there is a specific cap on such funds for students who elect to take a voucher in Allen County. We know the job that our teachers have done heroic over this past school year. And they deserve a pay raise. And we have worked very, this Board has worked very hard over the past 10 years to put every dollar available in their pocketbook. So, again, we'll take a look at the 37 recommendations. And I'm eager to work for a Governor that I voted for because I believe him to be a sincere person, a sincere leader. But I want to see where we're going to go. And I think we're going to have to collectively make some difficult choices. And so, recommendation number 38 is to reduce the amount of money that the state allocates for vouchers. And specifically, the amount of money that parents who opt to go elsewhere with their children have a cap on those funds, too. So, that's where we are. Finally, I'm going to miss these two folks. The number-one job that Board Members are constantly reminded about is that they have to hire a great leader, a great superintendent. And Glenna and Tom, you got the job done, along with your friends up here at the table. We've got a great guy. And I thank you so much for being a part of that experience. I'm going to miss you. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
We will miss all of you, too. I want to publicly congratulate Jennifer and Noah for becoming our newest Board Members. Jennifer especially, I know you'll do a great job. So as I leave, I am confident that the Board Members that we have here and our new Superintendent have not just the passion, but the determination to take our school, Fort Wayne Community School District, to a whole new level so that we will be able to compete with those schools that are taking some of our students through the voucher program. And so, I leave, again, having enjoyed eight years of working with all of you. And it's been a real treat. And look forward to hearing all the great things that will be going on here at Fort Wayne Community School District in the future.
Thanks, Jennifer. Tom?
I just want to congratulate Jennifer and Noah also on their election. I know you guys are going to do a good job. I have no question about that. Going to look forward to reading in the newspapers about all the wonderful things you're saying and doing. And I want to thank also Bill Crytell, the fellow who ran against me for reelection. I only won by, you know, 1% more than he did. He did a very good job, and I wish him well in the future. And I want to just say goodbye to all my friends here on the Board. I'm sure we'll be seeing each other around once in a while. And I'm looking forward to my retirement, so to speak. Thank you very much, one and all.
Thanks, Tom. Maria?
I want to start off by just thanking Tom and Glenna for their service. You don't become a school Board Member for the money. So it's, I know that we get to be on TV. And I know my son thinks that that's just the coolest thing ever. But what you don't see is all of the time that school Board Members put in when we're off camera. And it's a lot. So thank you so much. I really do appreciate all of the work that you guys have done. And I hope that you enjoy your retirement, Tom.
I am planning on it.
Earlier this week, I was able to attend the Indiana School Board Association's Legislative Act, Legislative Action Network. And they put forth their 2021 Agenda Items. And so I mentioned before that a lot of what we do and what we can and cannot do comes out of Indianapolis. And so there is a list that the Indiana School Board Association has put together. And these are going to be the things that they advocate for in the 2021. What is that? They do the biennium budget. And so this will be a long session this year. So hopefully, everyone gets involved and you start to follow all of the things going on. But here are some of the key things that I took out of that webinar. We'd like to count students receiving virtual instruction at 100% ADM funding. I know my son is virtual, and he is doing all the work. And he is there every day. So he should definitely be counted at 100%, as should all the other students who are learning remotely. I learn test waiver and hold harmless for A through F school accountability grades. Again, this year has just been crazy. I can't imagine that everybody is learning at their highest level with remote learning. I know it's a lot of hard work. And like Dr. Daniel has said, face-to-face instruction is always going to be our number-one choice. But I hate to use an online meme, but COVID. So, yes, I don't think that we should be holding our schools and our teachers accountable for such a crazy environment that we're in. Voting rights for school Board Representatives on local redevelopment commissions, that's a big one. It affects tax dollars. It affects tax dollars and percentages of taxes that will come back to our district. So, I know a lot of smaller communities are looking into this, and it, it's just a good thing to do. Eliminate the homework gap or digital divide by ensuring all Hoosier students have access to the internet connectivity in their homes. And I know that we're paying a lot monthly for all of our MEE fees, and so, if the state would just take the initiative, step up to the plate, and just provide connectivity statewide so that we could use those dollars elsewhere, that would really help us. And I also just wanted to finish with, this December board meeting is always my favorite because Lakeside Strings Department normally would come and play.
Yeah, that's true.
And so, I just wanted to send Lakeside Strings a message that I miss you, and I wish that you would have been in welcoming us when we walked into the building. And also, since this is our last board meeting before break, I just wanted to say thank you to all of our staff, all of our SEDEXO workers, teachers and principals, nutrition services. You guys have been rock stars with remote learning, food pickup. Yep, so just, I hope everyone gets time to rest and relax and renew your spirit. So, that's all I had.
Thanks, Maria.
Yep.
Ann?
Steve, I like your idea of how to increase teacher pay by reducing the vouchers or choice scholarships. In my opinion, that would be the easiest and best way to do that. But in the public education advocate circles, there's a lot of concern that the school choice scholarships will be expanded. So, please keep your eyes and ears open, people, and be ready to write your legislators, call your legislators, and let them know how you feel about public dollars going to private parochial institutions. And I had an hour-long conversation with one of our legislators, Dave Heine, just the other day, just on this topic, and I can tell you that Dave Heine is all for expanding school choice, and that is why we had that conversation, because at another legislative preview, that was one of his comments, like, right now is definitely the time we need to be expanding school choice. And, you know, and he mentioned because of COVID, we need to expand school choice. But to me, you know, now, this is the time when parents get so many choices because of COVID, that, you know, I don't think an expansion is at all necessary. So, again, keep your eyes and ears open, and I know Maria will be watching as a legislative person with ISBA, but we need to pay attention this year at the State House and be prepared to write and make calls to your legislators. And I also wanted to thank Tom and Glenna for their service. I appreciate both of you. And everybody else, be safe this Christmas and stay healthy.
Thanks, Ann. Raleigh?
I would like to say thank you to everyone who applied for that district three spot. I was in that, in that hot seat this summer, and so I know exactly how you felt, so it, thank you so much for applying and taking interest in serving on the board. Congratulations, Noah. I look forward to working with you and also to Jennifer. I want to say thank you to all of the staff, the teachers, the principals, the people here in this building, Grile, Dr. Daniel. I mean, this has been a crazy semester, and everyone has worked so hard to just kind of keep things going, you know, putting the students first, and it's an incredible task. I think that we all are looking forward to this break, even though I know that being on break doesn't mean that the work stops. So, thank you so much for, for everything that you do. We appreciate it. And also, Steve, Maria, and both, and Ann also have encouraged people to really get involved, to pay attention to what's going on on the state level. I know that Noah's really active in that, and Jennifer, too, and also Ann, so I wanted to know if you could tell people who are watching, some of the organizations that kind of really focus on that. All that information is so overwhelming sometimes to people, and so if you could point out some of the organizations that maybe they could follow on Facebook or Twitter, so they can kind of stay abreast of what's going on and find ways to get involved.
Absolutely. Well, I would start with the Indiana Department of Education is always a good one to start Let's see, the KISS page gets a lot of information out there, and that's a Facebook page.
Indiana Coalition for Public Education. Both the state one and Monroe County Indiana Coalition for Public Education are good ones to follow on Facebook, and they have websites. Northeast Indiana Friends of Public Education has a Facebook page and a website. Diane Ravitch has a blog, and maybe I'll post these on my own Facebook page just to get people up to speed and, and start following, and, you know, because now is the time in January when the sessions start.
Thank you for that.
And I would also suggest that now that we have a local representative who is on the House Education Committee, Martin Carbaugh, that even though he may not be your representative, you may want to reach out to him, maybe get on his, maybe take his survey and get on his mailing list, because Mr. Carbaugh has been, I would say, an ally of us in several issues over the past few years, and I hope that that's a partnership that we can take advantage of.
If I could just reply to also Raleigh's interest in creating coalitions. I serve on the Indiana School Boards Association's Board of Directors, and at our meeting 10 days ago, we had a conversation with Jennifer McCormick and, about the upcoming session. And one of the things she mentioned is that we do a terrible job of contacting our legislators. And she says that if a legislator gets a handful of calls, 10, they're alarmed. To us, to me, that's embarrassing. And this year, I really do think that we as school board members, along with our peers at East Allen and Northwest and Southwest, need to band together and to focus on those specific issues when we need to send an email, make a telephone call. And we, we just, if that is an early resolution for 2021, I put forward that, and you can still call, right?
Yeah.
I have your email, and I have your email, sir.
I'll add.
And we need, we really do need to make our positions known this year, and it doesn't take much. So, anyway, there it is.
I'll add that there are hundreds of people that watch our school board meetings now on Facebook Live, and I would hope that if you take the time to watch our business meeting, that you could take a couple of minutes and reach out to legislators. Oftentimes, they will have the email already drafted for you. You just have to plug in your name and your ZIP code so that it goes to the right legislator. So, it is really, I've been to several conferences where legislators will say, oh, if I get three or four emails from my intern, then I know that it's a, it's a hot topic. And I was like, three or four?
Yeah.
Like, it's just, it's just crazy. You would think hundreds of people reach out to them, but no. So, yeah. Your voice does make a difference. I'll just say that.
I'm glad you mentioned it, because, you know, I think that should probably be a New Year's resolution for all of us, is that why not be proactive? Let's reach out to them now, because this is going to be such an important session. And we have this next-level teacher compensation commission to, you know, there's some ideas and talking points in there, but this is going to be an important session. It's a budget year, so the next two years of budgets for us is going to be determined. Dr. Daniel?
Yes, well, a couple of comments. First of all, thank you for your service leadership. Being on school boards is, sometime, is a thankless job, and you're not pleasing all the people all the time, rarely. Matter of fact, never. So, sometimes it's a thankless job, too. So, with that in mind, though, thank you for, again, your years of service, and then congratulations to our new members, and I'm sure that the whole will bring them along very quickly. And I look forward to the January 30th time to spend time with an administrative retreat, so, board retreat. So, looking forward to that. Also, Urban Schools Association has a group, we're part of that group. We speak, there are some things coming out within, I believe, this week. The whole study on, in regards to the complexity formula or the budgeting formula, absolutely. This is a year where they're still, they're, they're going to examine that formula and try to figure out how to best serve the kids across Indiana. Kathy Friend's been absolutely a leader across the state, so we have a voice at that table, and we have a voice with the state legislators. I don't know how many Zoom meetings we've been on, Kathy, but there have been many, and the conversation is always about budget. And one of the questions we ask them is this: Our special needs population continues to grow. With that, those needs continue to draw additional expenses. We're covering a major portion of those through our education fund. We would like for that to be removed as a line item and that to be separately funded to address our special needs. Our special needs students deserve the best and most appropriate services as possible. And as you know, that does not come, that's different than the general ed expense, so it comes with a cost. So, we're also part of a coalition of area districts. This is a new coalition that's been formed just to address legislation and what's happening at Indianapolis, from what is, how do we get a voice from northern Indiana to, to Indy? So, with that said, I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Yes, this has been an unbelievable six months, but I will say that we're absolutely welcoming the end of 2020 and the beginning of 2021. And, you know, there's some hope, there's some light at the end of the tunnel. I'll be sending out a recording tomorrow, let's see, probably Wednesday, to all staff, again, reminding we need to still stay with masks, be careful of where your, your social gatherings, all those things coming into play. I think by what we're seeing with the COVID impacting our buildings right now and staff, that staff did a very nice job during Thanksgiving. Now, we continue that through the holidays. And who knows? Wouldn't it be marvelous if we actually had every student return for fourth quarter? I'll still dream that. That's my, hopefully Santa brings that for us, anyway. But again, please, please understand how much we appreciate and the gratitude for your service. It is above and beyond, and our community should be very proud.
Thank you. I also want to mention the Next Level Teacher Compensation Commission. That report came out today, and I think there's an article in the Journal Gazette about it. I think there's a link if you want to read the entire report. The most interesting thing I saw was that the commission, and I believe they're all appointed by the governor, was that they found, to be true, what we have been saying for several years now, and that is that although the legislature has increased K-12 spending, which they remind us of continuously and put in their campaign literature, it has not increased at a fast enough pace. In 1920, per pupil funding was 7% lower than 2010 levels, when adjusted for inflation. That's like a $580 million shortfall in 1920. So, and, and we've been saying that, but hopefully, now that it's been heard from essentially the governor's own commission, people will believe that. There's a lot of recommendations, like Steve said, there's about 37 of them. Some of them might apply to us, a lot, some of them are things that we're already doing. But of course, the biggest issue is that there's not going to be significant change unless there's increased revenue. That, that's just a mathematical fact. They make some suggestions for that, including some kind of a property tax fee, increased income tax. I mean, if you've been paying attention, you know that, what, in 2012, our state income tax was 3.4%, and now it's 3.23%? I mean, maybe it's time to restore that to the 3.4%. The other interesting thing is that one of their recommendations is that complexity funding, as a percentage of a state's total tuition support, should be increased. And of course, the legislature has done nothing but decrease that for what, Kathy, the last six years now?
Yeah.
Yes. So, that was a welcome thing to see. But this will be a challenging, this next upcoming session, of course, with the financial difficulties that everyone is experiencing across the country, will be a challenging session, but we need to, like you've said, be involved, be engaged, contact your representative, tell your story, particularly if you're a parent, tell your story. I also want to say that I am excited for young girls and women in this country, who in about 37 days will see a woman sworn in to the second highest elected position in our country. There will also be a record number of women sworn into Congress in January, and that's both Democrat and Republican. So, I think that's just a welcome sign for young women and girls everywhere, that anything for you is possible. And I look forward, in my lifetime, I hope, to see the first U.S. woman president. On a personal note, I'd like to thank each of you for allowing me to be your board president for this year. It has certainly been eventful, to say the least, you know, but, but as a board, I just appreciate everyone here being able to come together and face and deal with all the challenges that we've had this year. And like you said, Steve, our most important job as a board is to hire a good superintendent. And even faced with a pandemic and even faced with hiring someone who we never met in person until he was introduced to the public, I think we did that job exceedingly well, and thank you all for that. But really, a big shout-out to all of our staff, teachers, substitutes, classroom assistants, food service, custodians, principals, assistant principals, guidance counselors, I mean, everyone. Every staff member for Fort Wayne Community Schools has done extraordinary work this year. And, you know, we'd like to be able to say it in a different way, but we do appreciate everything that you've done this year. You've met every challenge, you've left every hurdle, and our students and our community are the better for it. So, thank you. Since this is our last meeting of 2020, thank goodness, we get to put that in our rearview mirror in a couple of weeks. But we do want to recognize our two outgoing board members, Glenna Yale, Glenna's been, has served two terms on the board, and Tom Smith. Tom has served one term. So, we just want to thank you for your service and your So we just want to thank you for your service and your advocacy on behalf of students and parents and teachers. So we have a little gift for you. Krista, do we want to do a picture or no? That means you two have to come down.
Brown chip ticket to Hawaii.
Oh, wow. So just as a little token of our appreciation, that's not you, Glenna. We have this to present to you. Socially distanced picture. You want to come down here and do a socially distanced picture?
Sure.
Down there or you want to?
You know what, just standing out behind us would probably be better.
And should I hold Glenna?
Thank you.
Congratulations. And thank you for your service. And I also hope that everyone has a relaxing, refreshing, joyful holiday break. You deserve it. So I believe if anyone is understanding adjourning.
Move for adjournment, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Maria. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
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 And so now the microphone is open for anyone wishes to address us. And I have a couple of names of people who've signed up. Anyone else who's off the report.